I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Do we have a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now open up for public comments if there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda tonight. That would be a perfect opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda needing clarification?
So we do have Mark with the Carver County Attorney's Office here. He just have a presentation. It is on the consent agenda, but I think it'd be good, yeah, to have Mark kind of go through his PowerPoint and kind of go through that contract for 2019 for us.
Okay. We'll remove C1. Remove C1 from the consent agenda. We'll move it down to 6A1 and then move the other two down appropriately. That'll give County Attorney Metz some opportunity to not have to spend the entire meeting if he so chooses. Any other clarification with the consent agenda? Not all the promotion to approve the consent agenda with that one change.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Perfect. That will take us right into 6A1, 2019 Carver County Attorney Prosecutor Contract. County Attorney Metz.
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Mark Metz. I'm the Carver County Attorney and it's a pleasure to present to you the prosecution contracts through our office. And I think it's been, I don't know, maybe about seven years since I've been before the council that asked me to come out and give a very short presentation that I'm happy to do and go through the PowerPoint. And as you know, our office prosecutes all felonies by statute for every city in Carver County, but 10 of 11 cities contract with our office to have us also prosecute petty misdemeanors, misdemeanors, gross misdemeanors. Only Chan Hassen contracts with a private law firm to prosecute those cases. And so I go through August, September, October and presented some of the city council meetings that want me to come and just talk about who we serve and essentially how does breakdown of the cost. So I don't know if you have the PowerPoint in front of you?
Yeah, everybody has it.
Okay. Sure. Perfect. So our staff costs are a little under $203,000. And what I did about three years ago was do a really thorough audit in our office, really to evaluate what is the cost that we're allocating and is it too much, is it too less? And so we did the best we could to go through all of our cases, make a determination how many attorneys we utilize for this prosecution contracts, how many administrative staff personnel we use, our law clerks and those types of things. So that's how we come up with that $203,000. And it hadn't been done probably in 10 years or 15 years, so I thought it was a good time to do that audit, which we did. We obviously take in fine revenue for tickets and for other criminal actions that occur. And so that's the fine revenue in 2017 with this, which is a little over $97,000. And then the contract cost allocation is a contribution really by Carver County and the Board of Commissioners that value having the county attorney's office prosecute these cases for the cities. So they want to help subsidize the cost to make it affordable for the various cities. So they contribute $18,000. So that comes to a surcharge of $87,534, which is then divided by the 10 cities based upon a three-year average of how many cases we handle. And then we also have a 3.43% county personnel cost allowance. That's something that we had to do to keep up with the cost of living. And that can fluctuate, but essentially that was in 2017 what the county's increases were, was 3.43%. So it could be less, it could be more next year, but then at least you can budget for that.
Right.
So the cases by location, pulled out mayor, and interestingly, in 2015, we handled 15 cases. 2016, two cases. 2017, 14 cases. I don't know why, you know, two cases in 2016, what the reason is for that, but that's why we take that three-year average. And that comes to 1.31% of all of the cases that we handle for the 10 of 11 cities. So last year the rate was $894.38. It increases because of the caseload increase, did a few more cases and then that allocation increase. So the rate that we're proposing is $1,148.83 for our office to prosecute for these cases for 2019. As I think I indicated, that was an increase, it's $254.45 of an increase. Another slide shows a comparison. I wanted to include that slide of all the 10 of 11 cities. So you can look and see, okay, well, what is Chaska, for instance? What, how many cases do we handle for them in Carver? And some go up, some go down. Obviously, Chaska, we almost do 50% of their cases, or 50% of the cases that's devised. So they have the highest amount that they pay. You take Hamburg, you know, we did one case in 2017. So it's .17%. So that gives you a little idea. And then the contract rates and caseload, again, breaks it down. You can look for yourselves what those rates are. Chaska, their 2019 rate is $41,988. To the least amount, New Germany, $74.12. We just don't do a lot of research for that. I wanted to include a slide citations issued by law enforcement, just to kind of give you an idea of, you know, is it increasing, is it decreasing? How many more cases are we handling? You take the sheriff's office, 2017, we did, they did a little over 4,200 cases. 2016 was 4,900 cases. So again, I don't know why that is, you know, the differences of that. It's just patrolling and maybe a council member voter, probably, he probably knows.
I left.
You left, yeah.
I'm a town after I left.
So, but it's kind of declined. The state patrol has gone up a little bit. And Chaska Police Department just gives a comparison. We did over 300 more cases in that year. So that's the end of the hard portion of the presentation. We have 33 employees in our office. And I really like to always say that it's because of their dedication and their public service that I think we provide a very high level of service. We pride ourselves on that. And what we do is we are centrally located. We try our best to be attentive. So if you have questions or people get a ticket, they have the right to come in. You get a speeding ticket, you have the right to come in on a Monday morning and talk to the prosecutor and say, here's my situation or circumstance. I admitted I was going, I was speeding, but I don't have a record. Is there something we can do? Because I don't want to have this on my record. And we'll have that discussion. And we want to give that service. So we want to have that one-on-one attention as well. And we want to be attentive. If you have an issue with somebody that is just not complying with some ordinance violation, let's say that they won't pick up their garbage in the backyard, he sent three letters. We're at our wit's end. Call me out, Mark, what can we do about this? And we're able to assist. The last thing we want to do is bring people to court on those cases, but it's something that we do. If, you know, we do everything we possibly can. And so as I indicated, it's because of our fine people that really work hard every day to, you know, to give the highest level of service. And I appreciate the opportunity on behalf of our office to prosecute these cases for you.
Yeah, I think it's been a great relationship. I know we've, you know, like I said, been contracting through Carver County quite some time. Any idea, I mean, any idea what our numbers are in this year? Are we down around the two?
Yeah.
Halfway through? Are we up more than the 10s?
I don't know. I haven't, I didn't run those where we're at this year.
See, but once that two drops off.
Yeah.
And we start leveling off, I mean, I still don't see it going up a great amount.
Yeah.
You know, in future years' budgeting, but that two is obviously keeping us down for three years.
Yeah.
So, but.
One more year to go.
I mean, it is what it is. And I like the algorithm used. I like the formula used for this. I mean, it does make it fair and a level playing field. I think the way it should be done. So I, I mean, I appreciate that.
Does Chan Hassen have their own contracts because they're, because of their size, or?
No, I think that's just traditionally how they've done it. They choose to contract with a private law firm. And, you know, and I will say that we have a full-time victim witness coordinator. We have two of them, actually. We got a grant of over $300,000 a couple of years ago to hire another victim witness coordinator. And that's critical that we have that intensive service. When you're a victim of a crime, then you can contact our people and really be involved in that with sheriff's offices right there. So I think that's pretty important. And we, we have five prosecutors in our office as well. So one of them, our new prosecutor is dedicated to these types of cases as well. But I don't know why they choose to do that. I think that certainly we provide a high level of service and we don't have any other practice. So that's what we do. It doesn't matter whether we do five cases or 50 cases. That's our job. And that's what we're going to do.
Right. Right. All good. Any other questions? Comments? Perfect. Well, thank you. I appreciate you coming in and running through a quick one.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we'll look for a motion to approve the 2019 Carver County Attorney's Prosecutor Contract.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. Maggie, that will take us now to 6A2, which is Financial Investment Quarter Report.
Okay. So I know you guys probably haven't had a great deal of time to look at this. So we'll go through it. I'll try and cover the highlights. So this is our second quarter report. We've been working with ABDO, getting them the information so that they can put this together. On page 26, it kind of gives us our cash and investments balances. So in our checking and savings, we're at, currently, we're at about $1 million and $98,365. And then our investments are about a little over $4 million 200. So that's kind of where a lot of our, that's where our total cash investments is about, a little over $5 million 300. And then it kind of breaks down where our investments are. We have our checkings and savings amount, our money market, and then our negotiable CDs, which in later on in the packet, it kind of outlines where those are spread out. On page 27, you'll see kind of the general fund cash balances. They break it out between, for three years, 2016 to 2018. Currently, our revenues are at 30.1%. And this is just because, this is year-to-date for the six months. And that's because our local government aid and our tax payments come in in July. So that's why, this is only till June. So you'll, we'll see an increase in the next quarter. And then right now, our, in our general fund, so if you look at the six months, like 100% of what we budgeted for, we used 83% of that. So we're below what we, we've used, like, below what we've budgeted for. So, does that make sense? So if it were 100%, we've used 83% of our six months of cash that we've budgeted.
Out of the six months?
Oh, it's six months.
Out of the six months, not of the year.
Of the six months, not of the year, not of the year.
All right.
It's like, oh, 80.
That's a little too much, maybe.
Yeah. No, I, I had to clarify that, too.
Or 17% on the six months, or 17%.
Yep.
Okay.
So if you go to page 29, that kind of gives you a little bit of an explanation of the revenues, kind of where they're at. And then at the bottom, it'll kind of show you kind of the discrepancies, kind of why we're up, like, really high in some areas and really low in some areas. So revenue, we've had quite a bit of building permit. Revenue's coming in higher than we budgeted, which is good. For two, we haven't received, or for the fire contract, we haven't received payments yet. We usually get those in July from the townships. And then in expenditures, our audit services are paid in the first half of the year. And we had some additional unbudgeted services from ABDO, Ica Meyer. And then fire wages, the expenditures are low because we pay at the year-end. And so that's kind of under budget right now. And then parks, maintenance and projects have not really, we haven't really gotten those, all those going yet. Page 30 kind of gives us a balance of all of our funds. This includes our enterprise funds. This just gives us a running total of where everything's at. I don't know if you have any questions for the questions on that. And then 32 gives us an outline of where our investments are Okay. So there is, there are some errors in our enterprise reporting on, so right now, 34, 35 and 36 are water funds, sewer fund and storm sewer fund. They're actually all, if you look at it, it shows like, I think for the water and storm sewer, it shows like a negative, but actually our revenues are more than our expenditures right now. So they, they're going to make that change. Because I talked to them today and I was confused at why it was showing that.
Can you say that again?
So our revenues that we're bringing in with like our fees.
Yeah.
Are above right now our expenditures. So we're bringing in more revenues than we're spending right now in all of our enterprise funds. But in this document, it, I think there was, she, she had acknowledged that there's some issues with the, like, the number, like, their formatting. So it's showing a negative on the water. And it's showing expenses being more than revenues in their formatting than, than the opposite, which is that we're bringing in more revenues than we're spending.
By in which column? By in the unfavorable column? In the variance unfavorable?
Yes. So right now it's showing, showing that our expenses are higher than our revenues, but that's not accurate. And I confirmed that today with, with ABDO. And I did, let's see, they do have some explanations next to some of the revenues and expenses, kind of where some of our expenditures have gone, which is purchasing water meters and well repair expenses. And then I think usually our bond payment is in August. And so that's why that's not showing on there yet. So we still have those payments that are coming up. And so that's probably why a lot of our expenses are lower than, than what we've budgeted, what we're planning on. Because we haven't made those high principal payments yet. And that's.
So that's what the, that's what the difference is? Or is there a wrong number? I'm still a little confused by what they've said.
So there, she just said that her formatting is, I think what, it's supposed to, it's not supposed to have the parentheses around it. It's, so it's supposed to show like a 157.4 in the positive. So it's supposed to show that we're 157.4% positive, like, so that our revenue is that much higher than our expenditures. But for some reason, she said that the formatting of, that she used, like, for some reason made it negative. So she just has to reformat that. And I can confirm that, but that's what, that's what she explained to me today, that it's supposed to be the reverse.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah. If I can get clarification on that from her.
Yeah, yep. I can do that. Yeah, she just said that that was an error, so. And then if you look on the remaining pages, it just shows kind of where we're at in all of our funds, like each line item. So if, I don't know if you have any specific questions, but that's kind of our account descriptions for each line item. And that's 37 through, I believe, 54. And if you look at the last page, if you look at what we budgeted for, for general fund and our enterprise funds, we're at 44.98% for the year, for the first six months.
What page was that?
That's on 54.
And this again, is this now for six months?
This is for the entire year.
This now is.
This one's now for the entire year.
So we've spent 44.98%.
Mm-hmm.
In six months. Okay.
Yep.
Any other highlights on there, Maggie? Anything else?
I don't think so. That was kind of the, kind of the highlights of, of the report. I don't, if you have any specific questions, I can.
When did I notice that error?
I, I noticed it today when I was going through it. So I just reviewed that today with them.
And I kind of corrected it before tonight?
Um, she, it was in the afternoon. So she just said that she would make a corrected version. And I can get that out to you.
I know what I would do if that was my accountant. I, it just seems unacceptable for, for a document like this, that we count on for information. We pay them for their expertise for that.
Right.
To end up here like that. I.
Yep. I can, I can get that.
Good job catching it.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure. Sure. Great, great on your side.
We need accurate reports.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you know why the accountant costed at about $25,000 more than what we budgeted so far?
Um, I know that some of it is the audit. So we just had, I think with the transition.
Did they have to do something with, did they do something with the comp review?
No, they didn't do anything with the comp review. But with the audit, I think with the transition of admin staff, we just, I mean, with three different people in, I think it just took longer than.
We were using them.
And it cost more money than.
That's a lot. That's a lot of money.
It, yep. And then they're also doing, we approved that they would do these reports for us, too, which are, I think, but it, it's not the entire thing. It's, I think most of it has to do with the audit, that, that it just came in over budget because of transition. So.
That's a lot.
And that's one of the things that we're hoping that when we do these reports, like, we've been catching a lot of things. And we've been working together to make sure that any, any, like, that we have a partnership that when the audit comes next year, that they pretty much will not have that much work to do. Because they're monitoring our, all of our financials now, like, every quarter. So any issues that they see, we fix them right away. And so I don't foresee them having any issues with the next audit. I think it was just.
Those still charges the same amount.
And I can ask them if, if they foresee it going down because of this. I can work with.
Can we get a breakdown of what their billing has been, just so we can use it for budgeting next year? I mean, are we going to have to budget $50,000, or?
I mean, usually they give us a set amount and, um.
I do remember something coming up and we approved it.
Yeah. But I think, I can ask them if, if, you know, if we're working with them now, if they foresee our audit going down. Because we've kind of been, it's been a working document that we've been fixing ahead of time.
And then I noticed one of their notes was in there, something about developer fees not being collected in 2018. Are there any that are due?
Um, no. So we were able to, that was kind of part of the transition, too. So we had the developer fees that were kind of getting, like, we usually have our engineer and our city planner and attorney, like, when they review development stuff, it, the best practice is to collect an escrow and to pull from that escrow. But we, I think with the transition and the leaving of Luann, like, there wasn't follow-up with that. And so what happened is our contractors were still charging for the account, which is what they should be doing. But we weren't collecting from the developer. And so what we had to do at the end of the year is we had to then send all those invoices saying that they owed that much money. They know, I mean, in their contract, it says they acknowledge that they will pay those fees. It's just that we, I mean, it got called out in the audit sheet that we really need to stay on top of it. And we are now. It's just something that was missed last year.
But we still haven't collected anything in 2018?
No, we have. Yep. We collected all the fees for 2018. So we, we billed the developers. And we were able to zero that account out.
No developer area fees have been collected to date in 2018.
What page is that? 30?
34 and 35.
Yeah. So it said received the 42, 798 escrow for Coldwater Crossing, the $30,000 for Hidden Creek, and the 32, 500 in landscape escrows. So what, so that was the amount, those were the amounts that we were, that we had to recoup to pay off our contract fees, the past year fees. So.
So where were you reading that?
On page 30, item four.
I think she's talking about right here.
Oh.
The developer area fees have been collected to date in 2018.
Which page is that?
That's on page 34.
34, 35.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
No developer area fees.
I'll have to ask them, because we have received all of our fees. So I don't know why it says that.
Okay. So then that was my next question. We do have escrow set up for the developers.
We do. No, we do. Yep.
And they have mine, you know?
Developer area fee.
So I am confused as to why they're saying that.
So under, under that, okay, so we received developer area fees in 2017. No developer area fees have been collected to date in 2018. Okay. So developer area fees, if I'm right, Dave, those are the fees like that, we didn't have, we didn't have any development happen.
It's different than the escrow.
It is different. I apologize.
Our last, our last one should have been Hidden Creek 7th and Coldwater 7th.
Right. And that was collected in 2017.
Terminology thing and me not knowing.
These are specific to the water and sewer funds specifically. And we didn't collect any in 2018.
Right. Right.
And we shouldn't have.
So those, as part of the development agreement, were collected in 2017.
Okay.
So then with this new development coming probably to the council soon for Coldwater 8, we'll collect more. But yeah, there wasn't an anything in, in 2018. So, sorry, I misunderstood.
And I know a couple of months ago, we had asked, how much money should we be having in our savings?
Yep.
Did you talk to the accountant about that to find out how much we really should be having in there?
I did. And he, what did he say? He said, so the amount that we have now is what he recommends. And that's why we pulled out about, was it, I think we pulled out like a million, or 800,000.
Yeah.
And we put it in investments. And so where we're at right now is what he recommends. And that's why that 800,000 got pulled out for investments. Because he thought we were putting too much in our saving, I mean, yeah, in our savings. And we can get a higher interest rate if we invest it.
So about 1 million-ish is kind of where we need to be sitting in our checking and savings?
Yep.
For cash on hand, for liquid cash. Okay.
Okay. Could we have like a work session on, like, our investments and?
Yeah.
I know, like.
I think that'd be good.
I'm just trying to understand. I mean, I know it's important to have investments and having that, that cash flow for operating of a city.
Mm-hmm.
But what, what is its intent for? Like, when I, when I save money for my retirement, it's because I'm going to use it when I'm 65. What is the city, I mean, the city isn't retiring.
Right.
You know, so like, does that make sense? Like, I just, I'm, I'm not saying go and use all this money. But.
Yeah.
I know that you need to have a healthy operating budget.
Right.
And things like that. But what is the main purpose of us doing these investments? Is it just to keep earning interest and then we use it for something? But I feel like we're not touching a lot of these big funds that we have for projects that we possibly could. But I feel like we're not touching a lot of these big funds that we have for projects that we possibly could do. I'm not saying we need to go spend it, that's all I'm saying. I'm just trying to have a better understanding of why do we have five million dollars?
Yeah, and I did talk with, um, Steve McDonald with Abdo about that and he, he did say that it is something we can look at. He did say that, you know, right now, putting the investments, or putting the money in investments right now is essentially to just earn interest and keep it kind of in a good place. Um, but yeah, he said, and I, and I did ask him, I said, you know, what if there are projects that come up that we want to do? Can we, can we pull from that? And he said, it's really situation-based, like it really depends on what projects we want to do. And, um, but he did say, you know, it is good to have kind of that emergency fund as well.
Right, like I wanna, I wanna see like the healthy...
I think we can...
There's a calculation going for that. We should know when our annual budget's earned. You have to have one point five times that or whatever that number, there's a, there's a...
He talks about that when he comes in.
There's a calculation for that, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we can...
I think it's worth, definitely worth sitting down and getting a handle on this and what is the intent and the future of this?
I think it'd be good, I mean, I'm, I, I...
That's all I wanna know.
In case our LGA gets cut off, in case the county crashes again. So yeah, that's why there's a formula that they have.
I just wanna understand it, cause I don't think they've ever, we've ever, in the four years I've been on council, we've ever talked about that level of, you know, that, what's that healthy amount that we can still be a healthy city? I'm not saying going and spending it, but what is that healthy? Like, we did the savings in open cash, we says a million dollars. So that's why we invested the difference, so that, that's a healthy thing to do. But what if, you know, projects don't get done, they get put in this fund and then that gets reallocated and it goes in here and then it's like, well then, we wanna build something different, well...
Right. No, and I agree, I, I, um, think it would be good for Steve to come and explain that. Um, I'm actually gonna sit down with him in a week or so and go over that as well. So I think it'd be good to have a workshop and just have, like, have him answer those questions and give you guys an idea. So we can definitely do that.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other questions on Q two report? All right, and let's move to, thank you Maggie, let's move to six A three, which is the speed limit monitor, County Road thirty, Highway twenty-five.
Yes, I don't know a whole lot about this yet. I think the idea was just to have a discussion. Um, it, it sounded like there were some concerned residents about, um, the crosswalk next to Casey's. Um, I know right now, we're in the process of, and it'll come to the August twenty-seventh meeting, those signals, cause we were getting pricing on those. But, um, but I think there was some interest in actually having like a flashing speed limit sign, is it?
Actually, what had happened was, um, there was something posted on one of the neighborhood Facebook pages about how drivers are flying into town and reaching thirty miles an hour at County Road thirty versus the crosswalk at Casey's, you know, coming northbound. The other day, seven kids were in the crosswalk and the utility truck behind this person was continuing southbound, made a brake for it, they had to slam on their brakes. First of all, the person was not going thirty and second of all, his V bar was not locked down. So what they're looking for is, they want, um, they want one of those speed limit signs that tells you how fast you're going right in that Casey's area, so. Because people are not abiding by the speed limit, people are not abiding by the crosswalk.
When we had that before, does someone remember, Kyle was not here, but the public works person had to lock it up every night.
Well, we're talking two different things. That's the speed trucks, the speed truck versus getting the ones, are you talking ones that go right on the post correctly, like Waconia?
If I read the, the post correctly, they just wanted to have a speed truck.
That's my impression.
So that people could be aware of how fast they are coming into town.
And there was supposed to be quite a few people here, but obviously not. So, um, but that's, that's my impression too, is they wanted the speed truck, cause they said, um...
Do you seem more apt to getting, they wanna monitor?
I wanted those signs and then I think Watertown moves it in different places and just to remind people of the speed. I know Waconia's new one right by the lake, cause everybody's speeds com- coming down the hill. Just to be like, oh, and they work for me, I do slow down, where I'm like, yeah, you're right, I do.
Yeah, they work for me too.
Yeah, when I'm, me?
I don't know, is everybody still speeding around the lake there?
I don't know.
I'm more aware of it.
Yeah, well, you're more of aware of it, I just don't think it changes behavior, that's the, that's the problem.
Well, I go from like thirty-six to thirty-two, so yeah, it does slow me down a little bit.
I think people still haven't noticed that we changed the speed limit sign.
Right.
And it's very easy to accelerate out of town past the lumberyard. And I think that's the problem. I, I catch myself where I'm like, oh, I gotta, I feel thirty...
But it's, it's not only going southbound, it's coming northbound. People are still flying into town going fifty-five miles an hour. So, and they really don't hit thirty until they get to County Road thirty and everyone starts to kind of slow down, so.
I'd be willing to, I mean, if it's just a speed truck, I don't know why we haven't, we can get that easily enough.
Yeah, they just, I was gonna talk about the sheriff.
Yeah, the sheriff's trailer, right, we can get that easily enough.
Kyle has to have the time to make sure that it's whatever.
Well, the seat is still having. But if we're talking the little ones on the signboard, we can, let's get some price on those, see how much they are. Maybe they're worthwhile having.
You know, and you just get one or two and you just, I think they just attach to the sign and you can move it.
And they're solar powered, aren't they? I know that, it looks like the one in Waconia is solar powered.
Speed signs are, yeah.
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 And we had the trailer right out here, was that last year or the year before?
It was a couple of years earlier.
And you had to lock that up every night?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's just my thing, until you get help. But you probably don't get them right away either. If you call the sheriff's office and ask for it, I'm sure they aren't gonna haul it out the next day, so.
Yeah.
Now, I do see him sitting out there, I see him sitting out there, uh, facing north.
Sure. Or when he's not there, he's somewhere else.
Well, and that's true, his tickets should be reflecting it. There's an issue there, it should be... Some of the conversation we should be having with him, he should be at somebody's so we can have those discussions.
But sometimes they're there at like five o'clock in the morning. And that's not the issue. They need to be there in the afternoon.
And especially after work, a lot of traffic coming through, a lot of kids going back and forth, a lot of, not just kids, a lot of people going back and forth to Casey's.
Came a lot in the afternoon, in the early afternoon.
Probably not contracting for policing at that time though.
Sure.
First, I'd rather see whatever it is we would spend on a radar sign and just increase the enforcement. If we want, if we want to change behavior, we've been trying for many years, trying to get people to slow down, you know, change the old signs, you know, it's an enforcement issue.
And I reached out to this person because I said, make sure you contact the sheriff's office. And this person said that they did and they were basically told nothing can be do about it because they don't have enough patrol to sit in one location.
Well, and that is the truth.
That is the truth, but, I mean, I think it's also...
I wouldn't expect them to, that'd be bad.
But I think we also just need to kind of keep on the sheriff's, like this is a problem area and we need this.
This is a priority of ours, we need to, we have to, one way or another, to, um, you know, when state or towards zero that time comes around to, you know, if, if they can target our area for, you know, enhanced state DPS funded, you know, state. Yeah, to come out and, um, work the area, so we can ask if that ever happens. And that is just enforcement, so at this point, I don't know. But hopefully when I was a reporter, I always told people that when they called in, like what people speeding or something else, want enforcement tickets written, be ready, because there's still gonna be people that will source the disconnect. Since we have this conversation more and more, so we're gonna, the disconnect, the message getting to our town, cohorts of disconnect, even the sheriff, and they're not getting where we think that disconnect is.
Um, I think one of, I mean, we did, I did have a discussion with Gary recently, cause I, I think at, in his last report, there was a question as to why he was giving out so many warnings. And I think his response was, he was, he was trying to educate people, but if the council wants more, like more of the tickets, that, that he, you guys can go for that. And he did say, like Gary said, um, that people will like the... Or they, they might be upset, but, um, but if that's kind of what, if that's kind of the direction to go, like instead of, cause I think especially with the speed...
Yeah, right, nothing to be upset about. Can we have like, I know he was just here, but actual discussion, the talk a lot, you know, like, can we pull off his report, like how many warnings, I mean, it feels we're giving, we gave residents enough warnings. You know, now it's time where we can't just keep giving warnings, now it's like, okay.
But then on the other hand, our, our, you know, cause one thing that made me think about what, what this person was saying on Facebook is, it seems like it's a lot of utility traps that are banned for semi, so maybe people who don't necessarily live in town, it's people just attacking through town, you know, workers and things like that. So, I know...
That isn't their first time they've been telling us.
No, but I, I, but I'm fully aware of, like, in one particular town that I was frequent, um, on my job is, we know where the traps are, we know where the cops sit and we notify other coworkers of lookout, there's a speed trapper, you know, there's four officers over here. Um, so word gets out, when you start getting tickets, word gets out that in that area, you're careful. And you pass it on your coworkers, you pass it on, uh, neighbors, hey, be careful because they're handing out tickets. So maybe it is more of an enforcement thing at this point.
We don't speed on one hundred, Edina.
Or...
Cause you will be taken.
Dirt seas and...
Going everywhere. Yeah, there's certain, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, hey Bonnie, don't speed on highway seven, say Bonnie.
No, I, I firmly believe in the, you know, the balance of education enforcement, because that's just good policing. But we've been talking and talking about this and... And I agree, I think we've been talking about this, we've talked, talked about the, the crosswalks and we're not getting it, we gotta get something done and... Some of these, I think we really need Gary, when something's gonna get on the agenda like this, we need him here. So we can't, and if he can't make it, we have to go to the next. Maybe he has different input and we're getting those disconnect planes that, you know, maybe some of the residents, um, you know, after hearing what Gary says, maybe it's perception that it seems people are going faster and it's really not an issue based on his professional, you know, working in the industry or... Probably true too. You know, so there may be some perception problems that we're just not getting, you know, so some of these, we just need to get them here and...
Other, other cities are kind of doing what the residents are talking about, the speed signs and the crosswalk signs all, you know, Waconia's putting them in, Watertown's putting them in, it's like, so residents see that, so that's what they like, so that's what they look for. You know, so it's kind of that, you know, we can put it up and they'd be just thrilled, you know.
And I don't wanna discount, you know, the residents, I want their sound. If they think there's an issue and we, we wanna deal with it, but, you know, and I wish someone would be here so we could get those and, and find out what the problem was. I, you know, I know social media at times can be a little bit of a hindrance on things and just things start spreading, but I'd like to squelch, you know, and get what we have to get and get the right information, um, so we know what we're going after.
We also need to follow through and we, I thought we were going to, with some sort of education of the pedestrian. I can't tell you how many, I see more people walk into the crosswalk thinking they're safe than what I do seeing vehicles violate the crosswalk.
I thought, isn't there a presentation, isn't there something on the web, city website?
Yeah, I think there's a, something that was...
Crosswalk safety, I think that was put out before I got here, but it, yeah, it's on the left.
And Channel Nine does something on the news every single year in the spring, every single year.
And I think it's, you know, it's all about finding balance, like, I think there's responsibility for both parties, like...
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I think pedestrians can't rely on, they have to be aware too.
Or teach your kids, I don't, I don't think a lot of people know that you have to get off your bicycle and walk it across the crosswalk. I, I never see anybody do that, ever, including on the trail, but there's no crosswalk there, so I guess they don't have to get off. But just little things like that, that keep you safer. And we're kind of falling short there too. Cause I do get the feeling that they think if they get all this, these things put in place, that they're gonna be safe in the crosswalk. And it's just a misconception that I'm not willing to stand behind.
Well, all, all cities are putting them in now too, so it's just kind of gonna be...
Complacent to it?
Yeah, so everybody's gonna kind of get trained in on sidewalks or crosswalks a little bit now, just because they have to light it. So it's just kind of changed a little bit in my mind, so.
The speed signs do make me think though, because people who travel the road every day just travel mindlessly. And it's like, oh my gosh, that's right, I'm going that fast.
They definitely make me think when it's an area I don't drive every day. The one by Waconia and the one that was in Watertown, I know where they were, I drove by them at least all the time. They don't, they don't do anything for me. I typically don't speed.
I, I do slow down too.
I slow down.
I slow down.
Fake news right there.
I mean, if we were looking at a, a sign that we could use portably to move around, I mean, definitely not out of the, the possibilities. Let's get pricing on that, but I think we need to have maybe even the next meeting, maybe if we can have Gary here, we gotta get this stuff resolved, what are we gonna do?
Yep, and then let's have pricing by the next meeting.
And if that means you get out there and say, they give ticket after ticket, so, I mean, you're breaking the law, you're breaking the law. What are people gonna get mad about?
Right.
I mean, that, slow down. I'd like to get all this resolved and...
Yeah, where are we on the crosswalks? I don't know, your weekly report always says that we're still working with them.
Yeah, so we were working with Dave, um, and then, my weekly report, yeah. So, I don't know if you guys can talk about like why it's been taking, why we've been, I mean, we've been kind of going through a process.
Yeah, so you, you approved those, we, we took a look at that and there's a couple of different options for the styles there. So we, we put some information together, got it to Kyle so he can go out and get some quotes for you. Uh, the two locations we are looking at were downtown by Casey's and then Fourth Street. Um, at this point, the only one we'd recommend doing anything would be the Casey's. Uh, Fourth Street has some issues with visibility, there's a, uh, street light right there that causes some issues of where to even put the sign, cause we don't have any right of way, it's all concrete. Um, there probably should be some configuration changes there just to make that safer if we're gonna do something. So our thought and recommendation at Fourth Street would be is that we work with MinDOT when they come through, do all their pedestrian stuff, that probably a couple of things. One is determine is that the appropriate location for a crosswalk if we're gonna have a second one or add them, whatever we're gonna do, and then there probably needs to be some changes there, either kind of with a bump bolt or something to, to make that crossing better. So, right now Kyle is, uh, getting some quotes for two different styles for Hidden Creek, or the, yeah, Hidden Creek Boulevard. Um, the one is just kind of the LED flashing one, they're both push button. The other one's a little bit more visible, kind of flashes kind of rapidly at you. Um, the, the one, uh, that flashes more rapidly has better compliance than just the LED one that has the few lights around it, uh, but it's also more expensive. So we're gonna get quotes for both those styles to bring to you and, and let you decide, depending, we didn't really have a real complete understanding of what the difference in cost was. So depending on how big that spread is, so we can have a discussion about what, what seems more appropriate there. Knowing that, again, we believe the one is more effective than the other, but, um, if the cost is completely disproportionate, that might not be...
Cause I know we've been talking about this, according to my record, since May ninth of two thousand and sixteen.
Oh, yeah.
So, we've been trying to get a crosswalk sign there for over two years and...
I thought that, uh, I recently...
We talked about five nine.
Before we get too far off the agenda, item of speed, speeding, which is in the, in the crosswalks, I don't wanna get too far. Can we have this, is it too soon for next council to have this, on council bring in, uh, quotes for the next meeting?
Oh, that's what we were planning on.
Can we have it?
Yep.
And have crosswalks on, and again, I just don't wanna get too far off the, off the topic of speed, speed limits, but...
Once a crosswalk is put somewhere, is that where it stays? Or, I could swear I just talked to someone about, um, that they weren't, were having a discussion on whether there, that's the best place to even have a crosswalk. And I can't remember who it was, was it Gary?
That was Gary's, and again, we'll talk, we can talk about that next week.
Right, yeah, yeah, he had some, some concerns with that one.
Project. I mean, to your point Liz, absolutely, we've been talking about this, we have to get this done, get it resolved. I know back in twenty sixteen, there was some talk about them and council decided not to put them in at that, so there have been some, we're not doing anything, now we're back maybe doing something, so.
It took a while to get a spot to the MinDOT.
Get it resolved, um, at the next council meeting if we could, maybe. And again, I'm just trying to keep it more to the speed limit, but I appreciate the updates on that. All right, any, uh, anything else on speed done? Okay. Uh, city council reports, Eric, anything? Tyce?
I don't think I do.
No, uh, Nikki, anything reported Liz? Oh, and I have nothing myself at this time. Then I'll look for a motion, any other business?
Primaries tomorrow.
Primaries tomorrow, uh, seven AM, eight, seven AM till eight, seven till eight tomorrow. Perfect, I'll look for motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Motion in a second, I'll have to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Is there any, Megan, do you need any time, can we jump right into the work session? All right, we'll jump right into the city council, city council budget workshop meeting.
Okay, so I'm actually gonna push the fire department preliminary CIP up, um, cause I know Rod has a meeting that already started, but, um.
All right, we'll move, move B up to A, A to B.
I, yeah, so I apologize, I didn't put numbers on the pages, um. So I don't know if, if Rod, you wanna go through it? I know, um, it's on the second page, it's the proposed capital improvement. And my, my goal with just presenting these preliminary CIPs is just, um, just to give you an idea of what they look like at this time. I still have some work to do with, um, kind of fitting it into the budget and it, like what, how it's gonna look. And so this is just kind of which, with what each department kind of is hoping for. And I, I wanted some feed, I think like this meeting is to give feedback to each department and kinda what, what it looks like. So actually getting it put into the budget is another, another day, but this is just kind of the proposals. Um, so Rod, do you wanna start, or do you want me to go through it, or? Okay, okay. Oh, you want me to go through it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so, um, I think for the fire department, um, we have that, the two thousand, I think this is supposed to say two thousand nineteen, the two thousand five truck payment. But we, I believe already have that budgeted for. Um, it looks like there's, for two thousand nineteen, there's the replacement of the radios, um, and the replacement of hose tools, pagers, extraction tools, and miscellaneous items, so nineteen thousand. I know we had done a hundred thousand for, last year, we kinda put for capital in, um, the replacement of the turnout gear. And, um, and then there's some other items, um, that they wanna start budgeting long-term for, which puts the total at three hundred fifty-four, um, dollar about that for two thousand nineteen. Um, what I want to do is I, and I talked to, um, Abdo today, is I, I think it'd be good for, um, us to sit down and kind of put together the long-term plan, like how we can finance, like how, like the, just to make sure we're financing everything the way we should be and having like a, instead of having that a hundred thousand dollars where the leftovers kinda get put into the truck fund, actually have a line item each year for capital projects that says, okay, this is how, this is what we're looking, this is the equipment that we're looking at replacing in the near future. How much do we need to budget for in that year so that we can purchase those items in the future? Cause I don't think we're doing that right now, right now, we're just kind of.
Well, frankly, it's not in general, I mean, uh, those two little stuff. It's so hard to budget something exactly if you don't, you don't look and break down.
Yeah, no, and I think it's good to have those maintenance, like those backup, those funds for kind of those unexpected, um, things. But I think just for, um, like right now, we're working on our water CIP and our sewer CIP, and we're, we're kind of doing those items each, we're projecting for those items that we, for maintenance purposes, but then also replacement things. And so I think we need a line item that says, okay, these are the near, future things that we need to replace, like, we need to have like a yearly schedule, what all those are gonna cost and how we can break it year to year so we can start saving up. Cause I don't think we're saving right now, we're just at all, so we need to sit down.
So you're saying for the end of the year stuff where it goes, is that what you're saying?
Right, so anything, like right now, we're just kind of, we're kinda budgeting like a thing.
Well, let's look at, so like the turnout gear.
Mm-hmm.
In the last ten years, we need a hundred and twenty-eight thousand replaced, well, we're gonna start saving twelve thousand three hundred every year. Are you talking about where's that twelve three going every year, so we know it went for turnout gear? Were you talking for the?
Yeah, so I, what, what I am proposing to do with this, um, CIP is, is working with Abdo to come up with a schedule, like, okay, so what are these, when do we wanna replace these and how can we budget for them? Like, so that we're actually not paying for them the same year, like, we're not like, oh, we need a new truck, let's budget.
So we've tried doing that and council was in disagreement as to whether we should do that or not, I think they would.
Okay, so you're, cause I think, I mean, my, I feel like it's smart to actually break it up, like say, okay, we need to put aside money each year to start saving up for these items, instead of, okay, we need a new truck next year, let's pay for it all upfront. Or all at this time, so we'll have this big chunk that's owed that year. Whereas if we start saying, okay, we need, we need to start, this, these are our items that we're looking at in the near future, how much does it cost total? And start putting the appropriate amount away each year, so we're actually building that fund. I think that's the better way to do it, um.
Yeah, I agree, it's just that we could never agree on, to do that. Cause I think that's what you've attempted to do for every year, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Cause then it comes down to, are the residents now paying for it, or should people come in, pay for it, who are gonna benefit from it?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
If I save for a truck for thirty years and then I, I get nothing out of it, I've been paying, but you can look at it, I've had other equipment that I've not paid for, you know, so.
But there's.
Just every side you wanna look at, side you wanna look at, if you bond for it and.
If you bond for it, then it's like, you know, it's kind of a similar thing where.
No, absolutely, yeah, eventually.
Right.
It, it eventually gets the same.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right, yeah.
The problem with that is, is that everybody has these nice CIPs and they have these beautiful wish lists, and we're collecting, you know, funds for that. Stuff that may never even, maybe they shouldn't be on the CIP then, maybe, I don't know, I, yeah, and. Certain things, you know.
Well, that's where some of the, I think some of the problem comes from. I mean, most, all of our other CIPs, I think we can do what you're talking about, Megan, but because of the value, when there's one, two, three, four, six trucks in there and now we're gonna try to budget and get a CIP and for six different ones, also in the fire department budget comes to two, two million dollars we need every year to start saving, that's an exaggeration, five hundred dollars and whatever, then we just, we'll tax people out, we couldn't, we couldn't do that at the time for many years, remember when the housing market crashed? There was a reason we didn't do some of this, we would, this budget would be, if we truly did it that way, where we need, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand, we need fifty-nine thousand a year, thirteen thousand a year, sixty-four thousand fifteen hundred. It's huge amount that we just can't tax people, we can't do it. Now, are we starting to get there and we can, maybe, absolutely, I think we're trending in the right direction, but.
No, and.
For me, I think that's why we haven't done it.
Right.
I guess if we, I don't really mind doing what you're saying, cause I like that idea, I think that's the way people run their businesses, I think that's the way they run their personal investments, or things that they're gonna do at home. But then we need to start looking at the CIPs and, and getting them down to the bare, do we really need this?
Right. No, and that's why I think.
The other thing I'm looking at is there's no, um, there's no accounting for, let's say, a tanker. What are we gonna get back from that tanker? So we collected, you know, three hundred thousand, well, maybe we get, you know, I know we aren't gonna get a hundred thousand for it, but let's say we do. Well, that's, that's not taking off, taken off of here.
Right.
It's hard to tell what we were gonna get for things that we're replacing, the rescue truck and all of this stuff, the trucks that we're replacing, that should be accounted for.
Everything should have depreciation.
If we're gonna start, um, saving for them.
Right.
Then we should also take into account that, well, it's not gonna quite cost us that much.
Right.
Or that could be our buffer if we were off.
Sure. Yep. Could be the buffer.
Yeah, that could be our buffer that we were off on our.
Nineteen eighty-nine tankers probably depreciated as much as it did.
Right, right.
But some of them aren't that old.
And either way, and I, and I'm fine getting those numbers out in front of us and looking at them and saying, is this the way to go and seeing how those numbers fit in? But, and, and again, I'll tell you Rod, from where I stand on, if we start going that direction, I mean, you're gonna get a lot of pushback from you on, are, is this equipment necessary? I mean, we really start getting into that, and we've had those conversations and I think I'm upfront with that, but, um, then it really comes down to how much of this do we, cause that.
There's grants and donations that come in, yeah.
I mean, it really starts getting into a lot of money and.
I agree, there, there's other variables.
But, not that that's a bad thing, I mean, we should have those conversations.
Maybe we save a percentage up, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's why I think it'll be, like, I think it's good that you guys see this tonight, and then I think the next step is for me, um, and Abdo, Steve from Abdo and, and Rod to sit down and kind of actually see, see what it looks like.
If you need Abdo at the beginning, I mean, if you and Rod can sit down and first do it on Excel, spread and get it figured out what it is, you guys should be able to get the, the initial parts done.
Yeah, cause I, I think that in the past, I mean, I think as part of our, like, we have a contract with them, they have our, they have, they ask for our CIPs every year so they can kind of.
They put that into their report at the end of the year.
They put that into their report, so, so I'll just.
And I'm fine.
But we'll try and work on this.
I'm fine getting those numbers and let's take a look at them and see if that's the right way, and then decide, are you going off seventy percent numbers? Because townships are paying for some, I mean, how are, what numbers are we gonna appropriately use?
Right, right.
Cause townships are paying a certain amount for equipment, not a fire station, but the equipment.
I mean, I like, I like seeing this, you know, knowing that we bought new turnout gear this year. So we know that, we now know that in ten years it expires and that we need new gear. I mean, that's a pretty simple one, we know that our air tanks have a lifespan of this. I mean, I agree with those things, those are things.
Those things absolutely should be on there.
You know, I, I, I like to see the, the truck stuff, but I also would like to see like, are, is it tanker two that's getting replaced? You know, like, and, you know, like, does that make sense? Cause we have more than one tanker, right? Yeah.
It's got the year on there.
Well, right, so, but is that tanker two replacing, so that would become tanker one, and then tanker one now would be tanker two? Not necessarily, okay, I don't know, I'm. Well, people who aren't in the department don't know, yeah. Yeah, well, right. Cause didn't we do that with the engine though, like we sold our engine two? But I'd like to see like what, you know, how, why are we, you know, I know we're replacing cause it's nineteen eighty-nine, but a little bit more detailed, that's.
Well, I mean, it comes back to Liz's comments, we re, we need to understand what this is for, I mean, we, we have to understand.
Yeah, like the nine thousand dollars for radios.
Give me a reason to say yes or convince me, I mean, there's gotta be a reason for some of this.
Are there grants available for any of this? Like the, I know you're not guaranteed. Turnout gear, those radios. Oh, oh, sure, yeah, yeah. I, I realize you don't know ahead of time, I'm just, I'm thinking we've gotten grants or something. Sure, okay. What is the status on the radios? Cause I thought, I, I forget what we've replaced and what we haven't. I thought they were all replaced, cause we thought they were all bad.
Do you have any of those older radios left? Since they're not, the problem is, is they're not being serviced or there, there's no parts for them, so they're being phased out.
And I agree Nikki with some of those, I, I wanna see that, the turnout gear, the radios, the hoses.
Consumable items.
Yeah, things like that, what we need to, those absolutely should be on there. But again, to that point, cause at the end of the year then, when twelve thousand three hundred's there for turnout gear and a certain amount are there for radios, we need to know, it has to go into that line item when we transfer it out too, so we have.
That's what Megan's saying, then you have a separate line item.
We have to have those.
That stays there and it doesn't just get thrown back into.
Yeah, so essentially you.
I think that's been some of our disconnect also.
Right, it would be like a line item that you actually wouldn't use that year, it's all, it's, it's what you levy for, but then you put it into a fund where you reserve it for future purposes.
Perfect, yep, that's what we need. So, yeah, I'd continue to work on that and get some of those numbers and let's see what they look like.
I like seeing this.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I do like seeing it.
Yeah, so we'll continue to work on the fire department one.
Okay.
Together. Um, anything else on fire department?
Anything more on that Rod? Anything to add? Anything else, anyone else in the comments? All right, yep, continue to work on that one, then let's go to public works.
Um, and I, I know, um, Steve had an update on the, which we'll probably be doing at the next meeting, is the, um, pavement study and then the water CIP, um, draft.
Yeah, so, both those documents are done, Megan was out last week, so she has them now and can get them distributed, but, you know, kinda picking up on the conversation, you just have the, the goal of looking at the streets was to really give a feel for what should we be doing to make, to take care of these things, make sure they have the maximum length of life possible before we have to reconstruct them and, um, what, what is the cost associated with that? So, we, we've done that, we've, we've gone through that, I won't spend really much time on it, but basically we broke it down into milling overlay, seal coating, and then we have kind of the east side town here that we need to look at, what, what are we gonna do with that? We've overlaid those, but at some point we'll probably do for reconstruction, um, so we'll, we'll kinda have to talk about how to have it forward. But, um, the city has about ten miles of road and, um, you know, what we're looking at is that we would, um, recommend milling overlay on those, take, take a couple inches off, put two, two inches on, when the road gets to be twenty years old, so.
Is there a document that we're supposed to be looking at here?
No, no, it'll, it'll be distributed, I just wanna let you know that it's coming and.
Good, okay, yeah, cause I can't.
So, we're kind of, you know, basically recommended that, uh, when road reaches twenty years old, that's when we look at, do a milling overlay project on it. New pavements, we would seal coat those when they're five to seven years old, something like that. And then, um, we have these in the region construct, so that'll be coming, the four A to take a look at, we can continue to talk about it, but, you know, it ends up being significant. but, you know, it ends up being significant dollars, you know, if, uh, over the, the next fifteen years, all of your roads are gonna be twenty years old. And so, they will be new for milling overlay in early in the next ten years. All that new stuff that we have is gonna be at least twenty years old. So, you know, you, you end up adding all this up with the reconstruction and milling overlays and seal coating, you're at about five million dollars. So, um, we'll get that out to you, but that'll be something we gotta just start talking about, and see, you know, how does that, what's the appropriate way to spread that out? We've kind of just taken it every year that you would come up with a schedule that we, we've developed. That may or may not be appropriate, but, uh, again, documentation, kind of, you're thinking about-
It gives us that tool that we asked for, and that tool we needed.
That you have, and, and what's the plan to take care of it, and, and how do you go over funding that, if you're to keep up on that? And then, the, the capital improvement plan for the water is also done, uh, we've got hard counting for that also. So, that'll be distributed to you, so, I won't go into detail tonight, but, again, that'll all be available for you, the necessary budget discussion, and- So, but, okay, what do we do this year for next year's budget? Some of it is longer term thinking, as to how you start figuring out how to pay for these fairly significant costs as they come up.
So, do you think we'll capture that in a separate CIP, Maggie? When we get that, what are your thoughts on that? Kind of similar how we have now, kind of Public Works, we have wastewater and-
Yeah, so, we're gonna have the sewer CIP, the water CIP, but the enterprise CIP is, I always have on the schedule for later, because our enterprise budget isn't due as soon as the general budget. But, since it was a, a document that Bolton and Mink, we requested them to work on, I want them, I want the council to approve it, kind of at a general, at a regular meeting, because it was something that, and presented at a regular meeting, so it was something that we asked them to work on, so.
And I can do that.
But that'll could be a separate CIP, that's what I'm asking, okay.
And, and roads are always gonna be tough, because, you know, lottery and it's an enterprise fund, you have a, you have an income that is associated with those expenditures. And sewer, the roads just kind of, you know, when we reconstruct them, we've got an assessment policy, which may or may not be appropriate anymore. Milling overlay is more considered maintenance than anything, so, anyway, we'll, we'll continue that discussion, but, you know, add that to what we're moving forward.
It gives us those guidelines, at least, cause-
And we do get-
If we don't take care of them, they will have to be replaced at a much higher cost eventually.
And we do get, like, a really small, like, small amount from the state, like, it's a small cities, um, have you heard, from the state? So, anyways, we get a small distribution for street management, because we're under a cer, like, five thousand. Cause we get a little bit, but it's, it's not a whole lot.
It's not near the five million, is what I'm hearing?
I don't hear that, that quite.
Okay.
But, um, so then, back to the Public Works CIP, um, this one's more based on equipment that will need to be, be replaced in the near future. Kyle, I don't know if you wanna-
Yeah, I can swing through, but I was hoping to give my snowfall presentation before this, so, kind of keep it open mind, and, I mean, granted, they can be taken off and everything, so, um, I got the mower on a two-year old placement, so that'll be due next year. Uh, one-time utility, I, I would like to have another city truck for the Public Works Department, even though we have two guys now. Ride around one truck together, it's kind of anonymous, and it's kind of like, we can do it. We got the cabota and everything, and it works good, but when you're doing a project, and then you gotta run for parts, or you gotta run and do this, it's just kind of a, it would be nice to have another set of wheels. And when the five fifty is down to, for repairs, or outed for a while, and tooling around the cabota, trying to go. So, we have been, I have been utilizing, actually, the eighty-eight, nineteen eighty-eight, that one fifty that the city has. We've got a transfer fuel tank in the back now, so we can all fuel it around, fuel generators, fuel them all earlier. So, having another pickup would be very nice. I got a plow truck, gonna load it around there, uh, kind of different discussion, but I threw it on there, just for, just for fun, I guess. Um, then replace the job of your tractor in twenty twenty, that'll be about eight years old. And then, replace the bow RTB, I believe I have on four, by a five-year rotation. And then, we just purchased a new Bobcat, and that will be on rotation in twenty twenty-two. And then, there is the five fifty we do, I have that on a eight-year rotation, and that'll be in twenty twenty-three. So, just a quick, hopefully, you have any.
Yeah, I think Kyle's gonna present the plow truck at the next meeting.
The loader back with tractor, Kyle, in twenty twenty, is that force snow removed, is that part of that?
It's a part of it.
Is that part of that package?
Yeah, it's a part of it.
Okay.
It would be necessary, you're on a little, but it'd be nice to have, you know, a little on a few other things, so.
And what?
A few other things, drum arm, and cat horsers.
So, outside of those two, the two hundred twenty-five thousand, a hundred forty thousand, everything seems small enough that we don't have to plan out in a five-year, I mean, we don't have to put aside a thousand dollars every year for repaid for the house, or correct, or-
Yeah.
You know, like, maybe the replacement of the five fifty?
Yeah.
At seventy-five thousand, we might wanna consider, but, when is that now? How many, how many years replacement plan is that on?
Eight.
Eight, you said?
Yep. And if we actually got another truck, then it could be pushed off to ten, I would say. We have it on a shorter rotation, because, I don't know, hard-
Ten thousand a year, we might wanna do that, we might wanna do ten thousand a year on that one, you know, make sure it's there.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be interesting to have the conversation on the snow removal, though.
Yeah, and it's, it's kind of, I think, one of the discussions that we'll have, and this might be too soon to talk about, cause I know Kyle has the presentation, like, how we'll budget for it. We do have funds in our capital budget that we could use it on, if we wanna just pay for it upfront, but you can also bond as well. And right now, we budget, I don't know, we can wait to have the discussion, but it's, we're looking at financing options, too, for, for next week.
Are you still shooting for this year, in this year's budget, or?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, yeah, we'll do it, hopefully, next, at the work session, come to work session, I'll be able to do it, but not following snow this year.
To purchase it in twenty nineteen?
Yeah, well, that'd be great if we do that, but, in my mind, yeah, that'd be the way to do it, figure out where our contract's a little higher.
So, we have plowing through twenty nineteen?
Yep, correct.
So, by the end of nineteen, or you're twenty?
Yep.
All right, anything else with that, with Public Works CIP?
What's the lead time on the truck?
About a year.
Yeah, it's a year on anyway, isn't it?
We ordered it now, but probably get it, okay. A little less than a year, but most people would say a year, a year.
All right, parks?
So, we've been discussing, um, recently at our park, um, meetings, kind of, our future goals, um, and our capital improvement plan, so we're kind of looking, um, we still have kind of projects to do in two thousand eighteen, for sure, but then looking out into the future, so we do have some, some ideas of, um, we, we try and stay within the range that we've budgeted for in the past, which I think is about seventy. And, um, so, um, next year, we have curbing at Meadow Park, we have some improvements, I, we kept that right? Parking, huh? Oh, yeah, we have the skate park, and then some new hoops at the basketball court in Blue Jay Avenue. Um, we did have originally the parking area and road from Highway Twelve for, um, Meadow Park. And we were-
We moved that to twenty twenty.
Okay, we moved that to twenty twenty. Um, but we're kind of doing research right now as to what our standards need to be for our parking lots. Um, because, you know, that definitely depends, uh, that definitely affects the cost, like, you know, if we're, you know, some, if we're, our standards are, that we need asphalt, then we need to budget for asphalt, but-
There was discussion for that Meadow Park parking, where it comes off of twenty-five. Some people wanted to gravel, because it was just gonna be a parking lot, and it's like, well, with our ordinances, we wanna make sure that, so, that's why it's being put off to twenty twenty, it's just for more time to research that.
Yeah, and we're going to-
I think there is an ordinance on that.
Right, so we have, we're gonna discuss it at the next meeting. Um, and then we have, twenty twenty, we have the basketball court at, a basketball court at Discovery Park, updating and replacing equipment at Discovery Park, which we still have to get quotes for. Um, one thing we've been discussing is potential splash pad. I don't, we don't know the cost yet, but, I mean, it's just something, and how we're gonna finance that yet, but it's just something that, um, residents have relayed to our park commission that they would like to see. And then possibly, you know, where is that park shelter that we've been discussing all this time? Like, where's that gonna fit into things? So, on the West Ridge, uh, we're also doing, talking about West Ridge parking as well in two thousand nineteen. So, that one got pushed from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, and-
The parking did?
Huh?
The parking did?
The West Ridge parking part. And then, the other parking got moved to twenty twenty.
Where are we supposed to get those playground equipment in?
That, I am bringing back to the park board, so we, um, I just have an, an update on that, and, um, so, I'm still hoping for the fall, but, um, I just had an update that I needed to bring to the park.
How much did that equipment cost?
Well, the approved amount that we approved at the council, I think, was like forty-two.
Yeah, maybe, I thought fifty-five for some reason, but maybe it was forty-two.
Yeah, I think it was under the-
But they're giving us, like-
Which is the update.
Okay, so, all right, the original, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause originally, they gave us a twenty-five thousand dollar discount, which brought the price to forty thousand.
Right, and so, the update is, the, the way that they quoted it looked, looked like a discount, but the way that, when I went back to them, they said it wasn't. So, there's an issue there that the park board needs to discuss. So, there was just miscommunication with, between what their report showed and what it meant, and how I interpreted it.
Either way, fifty thousand is not adequate for equipment and a parking lot. I'm pretty sure the parking lot alone was gonna cost like twenty to forty, can you remember? This is a pretty good sized parking lot.
Yeah, so, I think there was some, some discussion about that as well, like, how, how are we gonna finance that? And then also, what, what I'm bringing to the park board is kind of what that parking lot will, needs to be made up. So, so that'll go, since it's canceled for tomorrow, because of the primary elections, it'll be next, the next Tuesday.
I'll look forward to hearing about that, to see what happens with that, I-
Yeah, so that'll affect our-
So, if we get quote, so I'll look forward to hearing more and get more clarification on that.
Yeah, so that'll kind of-
It's concerning.
Change our CIP a little bit, too, so.
I thought we all looked at that quote, too, so we all read it the same way.
I know, I know, it was really-
Same clear, so, yeah, I'll look forward to some clarification.
Really weird. And I think he, like, I think he realized it after, he was like, oh, yeah, that doesn't look correct. Or, that, I can see why you interpreted that way, and I was like, so, I was a little irritated with that whole situation. So, we'll get an update to the park commission, I will, next week, and then see where, how we wanna proceed with that.
So, what we authorized to purchase has to purchase, it's on hold?
It hasn't, it's on hold until we can get, like, if we want, my thing will be, do we wanna purchase everything besides that sway fund for now, and then order-
Work through it with park board, bring it back, that's like, so, I'm-
So, we'll see what they say.
I'll be interested to hear what happened with that, yeah, like I said, a quote's a quote. All right, anything more on, uh?
I just think it needs to be, uh, this, this CIP for the park board has to be much more-
Yeah, it'll get cleaned up. I, I think this was just kind of our preliminary, um, plan at the moment.
Very preliminary.
And we just wanted to kind of get any thoughts that you guys had, if you-
Could we have another joint meeting with them?
Oh, yeah.
Cause we haven't had one since March, to kind of talk and layout each part.
I just go and don't shut up the whole time.
I tried not to say anything. No, but just like, to kind of get an overview by part, cause I feel like there's lots of exciting projects that could take place, but it's, again, a lot of money, I mean, I think every department has a lot of huge asks in this round, which we've wanted them to put those out on the table, but we can't do all of them, all the, you know.
When was the last time we had a joint, and is it gonna result in anything different than what we've already decided?
Well, I always thought they were somewhat helpful, because I think it just, they understood what the, where the council was going, and not creating some big budget plan and CIP, and then everything gets shot down, cause, you know, I'm sad that we never got, we had to say no to the parking shelter, because it was so expensive, but then what's the plan? Like, you know, we still have a huge reserve of money-
They talked about that at the last meeting.
And, again, it's another year we've gone by, and we've got two hundred and some thousand dollars, and nothing's getting spent, because every project we do falls through, so.
I think at the last meeting, they kind of started to reconsider, um, maybe what it's constructed of, where it's gonna be placed, try to save some money on it somehow, as they can, so they're just going through that process, so, you know, they were just as shocked as we were.
Well, right, I'm not saying anybody did anything wrong, but I'm just saying, no.
There's also some old plans and stuff that should be pulled out, yeah, maps of the parks, and-
If it's necessary, and the park board wants some guidance-
Won't hurt.
We could certainly do it.
Absolutely.
We could also look at, I mean, eventually getting to the point where we have the CIP, and the park chair comes and presents it to us versus, you know, so we get some of that feedback, where they're kind of going over the things they wanna do, and-
Right, yeah, answering some questions.
You know, the chair would present these versus Maggie, do, you know, doing it, would seem to make some sense.
And I know the park board has some new members, too, that, you know, just, I don't know, it's just an idea, I'm not-
Yeah, let's think through that, and maybe talk about it at the next meeting, if, if, see what the park board's thoughts are, if they wanna have a meeting, and if they feel it's necessary, and, you know, if we don't have that next one, and it's-
This is off topic, but I don't know if Maggie, it just popped in my head. So, a couple of years ago, we did a plan with Vincomire on the wetland project.
Oh, yeah.
And we bought the land, and we, well, we paid all this money to restore it to a wetland, and then something about people can buy wetland credits. So, like, what, so, how long do we have to wait till we can sell? Cause I know Carver County wanted to buy them from us for a discount, and we said no, because we think we can get a better value. I know it's not on the agenda, but I just-
Martini's gonna know that, though, it's like five, five years.
Okay, is it, it's five years? I wasn't sure, I just wanna make sure that-
And the good news is, yeah, the, the credits are selling for more than we had originally estimated, so, you know, the whole idea there was-
So, we could recoup the money we used to spend?
Yeah, the whole idea was, yeah, we got a important infrastructure project done, and had a way to hopefully at least pay ourselves back.
I just didn't want it to get lost in all the transition that we had.
What year were we in, just two, two, three?
Probably two, two.
Two, two, okay.
Yeah, and, and they continue to work and monitor that site, so.
Okay, so it's on, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of-
Yeah.
I didn't know when you can start selling your, the credits, cause it-
We'll have to get a sign off, we'd have to get a, we'd have to get a sign off, I'm sure, from them.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to get used to credit, not even for the waste of our time, and regulations and everything, and we gotta prove it. So, we have like a higher level to use the wetland, kind of, pop up at the, at the-
I can get you, you just put a, yeah, down for a hundred, time on that.
Yeah, I just don't want it to get lost in all the shuffling of, you know, you lose some of that history of what happened, and I'd like to be able to sell the credits, so that you can, the city can recoup the money, and that's the whole point of us doing it, was, cause it wasn't gonna, we could get that money back.
All right, anything else on the CIP, then? Then we adjourn.